I wanted to thank our mayor and our city council for highlighting National Suicide Prevention Week. This end month, this moment serves as a powerful reminder that there are steps we must take in looking out for loved ones, the people in our community, and those who have been impacted by this leading cause of death. Having lost my sister to suicide, I understand the profound effects it has on families. This month is very difficult for me because this is her birthday month. The pain and struggle to move on from such a loss are unbearable and linger forever. I appreciate the effects and progress our city has made to support and serve our community. I think we're doing a really amazing job, so I really appreciate that. So, thank you very much. Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for coming here. Now, it is now let's move on to the public forum. Members of the public are invited to speak on any item that does not appear on today's agenda. Please note that oral public comment may only be provided live at the city council meeting in person. Public forum will be limited to two minutes. So, call for speakers, city clerk.
I have one public speaker card from Virgil King.
Thank you. If you can state your name, I didn't catch your name.
Good evening. My name is Virgil King.
Hi, Virgil.
And I thank you for allowing me to say a few words. About 20-plus years ago, I believe you were on the city council then. I lived directly behind the Milpitas Shopping Plaza. There was a five-foot fence there where it was built. Those homes were built in 1955. And it wasn't populated when I moved in. Now, there is 20-plus restaurants and businesses. I see all the trash trucks, all the delivery trucks, and I was seeing a lot of it. My wife would open up the bedroom window, look directly, like I'm looking in your face. That's how we looked in the face of truckers, from our dining room to our living room to our bedroom. I stood here almost 20-plus years ago. Agenda item number two. Number one was the rezoning of a heavy industrial to residential that built a home that we park place. I was number two. The city approved a four-foot wood extension on top of a five-foot masonry. It's been for 20-plus years. Three weeks ago, it was taken down. No notification to me, none to my 90-year-old neighbor who's been there for 60-plus years, none to any of the neighbors that are on Whittier Street, which is a cul-de-sac. So, right now, we see quadruple what we saw 20-plus years ago. I spoken to the planning, spoken to building. They said there was anonymous call came in, and that's why the fence was taken down. Anonymous call at the back of one of the business closets in whole Bay Area. That's what we were told. No one was notified. They just tore it down. They said that because it was illegal, it was 10 feet. I believe 10 feet would be justified if you're residential. If my home was backed up to your home, my rear fence. But in a commercial to a residential, in most places, you have at least a 10- to 12-foot sound barrier. I get none of that. I get trucks day, night. So, I want to know what is going on and how do I proceed? Because I cannot look at that. I'm 100% disabled Vietnam veteran. The lights are triggering, the trucks are triggering, and the visibility of what I'm seeing is triggering. And I would like to know, I would like to know how to proceed. I've reached out. But thank you for taking my, allowing me this time to speak.
Thank you, Mr. King, and we will have staff look into that and reach out to you. Matt Cano, Assistant City Manager, where you at? You have his card and all of the information, and someone will be reaching out to you. And then I'll also see what's the follow-up on that. Thank you very much for that. Is there anyone else in the, from the public that would like to make any other comments?
I have no additional public speaker cards, Mayor.
Okay, so now, all right, so now I will close this public forum and moving on to conflict of interest and campaign contributions. City Attorney, tell them, Pasi.
Thank you, Mayor. I ask you, Mayor, and each council member, whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda.
Councilmember Barbara DiO.
So, the city clerk controls that.
None.
Vice Mayor Chua.
None.
Councilmember Lienn.
None.
Councilmember Fan.
None.
Mayor Montano.
I am none.
Thank you. I further ask you, Mayor, and the members of the Milpitas City Council, to please disclose any campaign contribution of $100 more received within the last 12 months from any of the parties entering into contracts with the city on tonight's agenda or contributions received from a development project applicant for a development project on tonight's agenda.
Councilmember Barbara DiO.
None.
Vice Mayor Chua.
None.
Councilmember Lienn.
None.
Councilmember Fan.
None.
Mayor Montano.
And I am none.
Please let the record reflect there are no reported conflicts.
Thank you, City Attorney. And now, moving on to the code of conduct, is there anyone that would like to read this? Vice Mayor? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Be respectful and courteous. Model civility. Avoid surprises. Praise publicly and criticize privately. Focus on the issue, not the person. Refrain from using electronic devices while on the dais. Disclose conflicts of interest in affiliations related to agenda items. Separate governing from campaigning. The council speaks with one voice after making policy on issues. Respect the line between policy and administration. Council will hold one another accountable to comply with this code of conduct. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. And now, moving on to the approval of the agenda. I would ask that we move one item to, item 12, to the consent calendar. Is there, I would like to make that motion. Is there a second on that? Can we take a vote on that? City Clerk?
Yes. Councilmember Barbara DiO.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lienn.
Aye.
Councilmember Fan.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I am an aye.
Okay, so is there anyone else that would like to make any changes on the agenda? Not, just make a motion to approve the agenda. Second, call for the vote.
Councilmember Barbara DiO.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lienn.
Aye.
Councilmember Fan.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I am an aye. Thank you very much.
Now, next, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Staff, do you have any comments for the consent calendar?
If no changes, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. And now, I ask, is it okay for the consent calendar to be, to proceed as agendized? I see none, so call for the public comment. We have one from Councilmember Lienn. Do you have a comment? Hold on, hold on.
Yeah, I'd like to pull C10.
Okay. Okay, item C10 is being pulled. Is there anyone else that would like to make any other comments? Or changes? Okay, let's call for the vote.
Mayor, we need a, we still have to call for public comment, Mayor.
Motion to approve this, the consent calendar, except for C10.
Is there a second?
Second.
And now, we will call for the vote.
Councilmember Barbara DiO.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lienn.
Aye.
Mayor, Councilmember Fan.
Nay.
Mayor Montano.
And I am an aye.
Okay, so now, moving on to the leadership and support services. And City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll turn the time over to the City Attorney. It's the item number 11 is a potential ordinance related to solicitation. We'll turn it over to the City Attorney.
Thank you, City Manager, Thomas. If you could hand these down to our esteemed council. Councilmembers, this is our first run with this fabulous new system. We weren't sure whether or not we were going to be able to display the slides for you or not, so we did take the liberty of printing a second copy for you. These are the same slides that you would see during the presentation. This item was brought back at the request of the council on the prioritization list, category two. This is to, for the council to provide feedback on and potentially introduce an ordinance adding no solicitation enforcement for residential properties within the city of Milpitas. Our Assistant City Attorney, Christopher Creach, has a presentation he would like to give at this time, and I will turn the time over to him. We'll turn the time over to him as soon as his microphone starts working.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. As alluded to, this item is returning to the council, and so I will not go over details that were discussed at the last meeting. As you know, council has been carefully considering this ordinance for almost a year since Councilmember Barbara DiO brought the issues of community concern to the council's attention. On April 2nd of 2024, a draft ordinance was brought to you for consideration, and by a vote of two to do, failed to be introduced at that time. On August 20th, 2024, the council unanimously voted to bring the ordinance back for further consideration and potential introduction. Next slide, please. If, if they are going. So, turning to the, turning to the slide that says, "Fill in the gaps in state law." Understanding part of this ordinance as proposed is to fill gaps in the law as it currently exists. And as noted by this citation to the Penal Code, most trespass laws at the state level require the homeowner to tell someone to leave. And that disadvantages residents who either feel uncomfortable in going forward and telling someone to leave or moreover feel scared in doing so. What this ordinance would allow is for residents, sorry, yes, can we get the next slide, please? So, what this ordinance would allow is it'd fill in that gap and give, give them the ability to post a sign and communicate their choice to people coming on the property so that they can prevent a potential trespass before it happens. It also fills other gaps in state law. It clarifies that consent can be withdrawn. That is, once you invite someone to your property, if circumstances change, you too can change your mind. It treats hawking and noisy calling from the street or leafleting the same way as any other trespass. While this proposed ordinance would fill in gaps in the state law, it does not do anything more than what the law already allows. That is, the law allows all homeowners to refuse anyone entry onto their property. What this ordinance provides is a common, clear language that everyone can use in communicating that information to those who are going door-to-door. Next slide, please. At the last meeting, one public commentator, that's Loretto, Kay Veto, Dimandall, made the point that the community need to be educated between the difference between political canvassing and commercial solicitation. That is, when someone who's campaigning for some kind of a political event goes door-to-door and sees a no solicitation sign, they don't know right now that means we're not looking for door-to-door salesmen or if they're saying we're not looking for anyone to come to our door. What this ordinance provides is a clear language of three different types of signs that people can post. And this gives businesses and others going door-to-door clear notice when they see one of these signs as to what it means. So, for that person going door-to-door to canvas for a campaign or for any other reason, if they see that no solicitation sign, they may enter. If they see a no canvassing sign, they may not enter. They see a no trespassing sign, they may not enter, and canvassers may not enter, and other uninvited guests at property may not enter. This gives a clear lexicon so that everyone knows what is being communicated when one of these signs is posted. Next slide, please. Besides giving a uniform language, this also provides the businesses and others going door-to-door certain protections and makes sure that these signs are posted in specific locations so that people know where to look for these signs. It requires those signs to be, have two-inch letters. That is, the size of letters given the usual setback in the city so that these signs could be seen from the street. It allows people, if the sign is not, is obstructed or otherwise not visible from the street, to approach until they can see that sign. It also put, while it puts the responsibility on the solicitor to make sure they confirm with the law, it also gets the partnership of those who are sponsoring solicitors. Ordinarily, a business is liable for the acts of their employees, including those going door-to-door. This ordinance creates an exception to that, saying you will not be liable if you tell your solicitors before they go door-to-door about the state's ordinance. You educate them, you have them sign receipt of getting that information, then that would absolve the business from liability. In this way, it enlists the partnerships of businesses and other sponsors of door-to-door people and allows for the increase of communication information to the public. Next slide, please. At the last meeting, one council member asked, "What is the message that's being sent to the community by this ordinance?" And the answer is, "No more and no less than what the community chooses." If no one posts one of these signs, then it is just a tool in the tool belt of the next resident who wants to post these signs and wants to take advantage of it. If residents choose to post these signs, it empowers their choice. It makes it enforceable. It gives people coming to the property clear notice of the message that they are trying to convey and who they are allowing onto their property. Residents can already prohibit entry to their property, and I'm sure you've already seen signs. No trespass signs, no soliciting signs posted all over. What this ordinance would do is to make those signs effective. It would give legal voice for residents' choice. And it also gives those going door-to-door clear notice of what these signs mean and where to look and gives the power of enforcing a violation to the residents so that they can take action to protect their choice. Next slide, please. As indicated previously, this proposed ordinance also has a number of exceptions crafted for common sense things like mailmen and process servers and government employees. I wanted to highlight one particular exception that's written into the ordinance as stands. And that is for any neighbor who enters upon the residential property of another neighbor on an intermittent and infrequent basis for purposes common in the community. As the proposed ordinance creates the exception for the neighbor going door-to-door to borrow a cup of sugar or to tell about a backyard barbecue for everyone who come to. It creates those kinds of common sense exceptions so that people in posting one of these signs do not have to deny themselves the benefit of the community and that the community can have the benefit of normal activity. What it provides is the same thing that the first section of the ordinance states, which is to allow homeowners the right to choose to prohibit those kinds of permissive contacts they're allowed to prohibit while ensuring that the public continues to have the regular and customary access to the property that they should be able to legally have. Next slide, please. Another comment that was brought up was about the difference between residential property and commercial property. The current ordinance would only apply to residential property. And to highlight the distinction in the law of how the law deals with these things, I took these quotes, which are from two different United States and California Supreme Court cases. On one hand, the United States Supreme Court has said, talking about an ordinance just like this one that allowed no trespass signs, "A city can punish those who call out the home in defiance of the properly expressed, of the previously expressed will of the occupant." In contrast, when dealing with the Prunyard Shopping Center in San Jose, the California Supreme Court and the United States Supreme Court said that "The California Constitution protects speech and petitioning reasonably exercised in shopping centers, even when the centers are privately owned." The law has created this distinction because in the modern day, these kinds of shopping centers become the town centers. They are the place where people congregate and necessarily are the place where people then would come to express their views. The law in this area is complicated. It depends on which, what kinds of improvements and amenities the shopping center has offered to decide whether or not the shopping center can or cannot prevent people from coming to this area. So, the current proposal before the council is related to residential, a residential ordinance only. If the council did want to explore a commercial property ordinance of a similar character, that could be prioritized and brought as a separate measure. But because there's a distinction in the law, it's important to have those two efforts be separate. Next slide, please. Another point that was brought up was public outreach. Any ordinance, once passed by the city council, doesn't take effect for at least 30 days. That can period, can be longer if the council so chooses. During that time, staff would work with the Public Informations Officer to be able to educate the community and to use all available resources to do so. That could be social media posts, newspaper and newsletter publications, updating the city's website, and of course, the press releases that we give to all media outlets whenever an ordinance of this kind is done. Next slide, please. At this juncture, the choice is left to the city council. Staff, as directed, has brought the ordinance back for discussion among the council. It has also been agendized so that if the council does want to introduce the ordinance tonight, it can do so by finding exemptions to CEQA and waiving reading beyond the title and then introducing the ordinance. And with that, I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Chris. And so now, City Attorney, could you read, yes, read the reading?
Sure, I can read the title of the ordinance. This is ordinance number 302, titled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Milpitas, Adding Chapter 15 (Quotation Marks) Residential Trespass, Canvassing, and Solicitation", close parentheses and quotation marks, to Title V, parentheses and quotation marks, "Public Health, Safety, and Welfare", close quotations and parentheses, of the Milpitas Municipal Code relating to the trespass of canvassers, solicitors, and others on residential property.
Thank you. And now that the reading has been cleared, is there any public comment on this item?
I have no public speaker cards, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Now, we will move on to council discussion on this item. Is there any discussion from council members? I do have one, a question, Chris. So, how does this affect HOAs? Because I know HOAs, from what I've been told, they supersede state law, a lot of their ordinances. So, how does, how will this ordinance affect HOA properties?
So, there's multiple parts to that. One is in the definition of the ordinance for residential property, which is for multifamily living areas. It defines the residential property as each individual unit. So, in the case of a multifamily living situation, each individual resident would be able to make that choice. Common areas would not necessarily be able to be posted with these kinds of things. In terms of whether or not a resident can post a sign, that would depend on what is in their grant deeds and what they have agreed to. In some locations, they've agreed to certain standards for an area of signs may not, may only be this big, may not be posted in these kinds of areas. Those laws, if they stayed that way for that HOA, could it be, it put them in situations where they cannot post one of these signs? In which case, that's the choice that that community has made. HOA rules can be changed. There are processes for doing that. As if an HOA as a community decided that they wanted to be able to have their members to take advantage of this, to change how their community looks, there are processes under the law by which HOAs could do that. But in terms of, is it possible that a community or a group of people agree, "We're not posting signs in this area" or "We're not going to utilize this law"? That's absolutely possible. And again, that's a resident's choice in the communities that they form.
Okay, so bottom line, it's, it still falls with the resident. So, you know, when I go to Home Depot and see all the signs, it's signs there, no trespassing or yard sale or whatever, but I don't see any signage that says no canvassers. So, this might, maybe this is a movement or something, so, yeah, just, just curious on that.
So, again, there is a distinction in the law between commercial property and residential property. The law is clearly established that residential property, you are the ruler of your home. You get to choose who comes onto your home. For commercial property, it's more complicated. There are some situations where protected speech must be allowed, and some commercial businesses may not be able to prevent those kinds of things. Certainly, some commercial businesses put in that trespass anyone who is acting in a way that's contrary to their rules and regulations for that property. So, there's no trespass.
I was, I wasn't really talking about the commercial property. I was talking about the signage that they sell. I, you know, I've seen no soliciting signs, but I've never seen any no canvassing signs. But, you know, that might be something you, that comes.
I will say that when we were looking into this ordinance and looking at what was done in other jurisdictions, we did check into whether or not all the types of signs had readily commercially available options, and all three types of signs did.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions? We have a council member, was it Councilmember Lynn?
So, I don't know if I can answer this question, but how did this come to the council? Was there complaints? Was there a desire from the residents of Milpitas to have this ordinance imposed?
So, the history of this ordinance was in October of 2023, a city council meeting. Councilmember Barbara DiO originally voiced the concerns to the city council. The council voted to add the development of this ordinance onto the prioritization list. Preliminary work was originally approved. It's taking less than four hours to give council members briefings related to it. We had briefings over a number of months, and then, I believe, in February of 2020, I believe it's February of 2024, there was a, there was again another prioritization item that asked council if they wanted staff to bring forward an ordinance to council's consideration in the spring. Council did prioritize that item at that time, and that was what led to the April presentation. And then, obviously, in August of the last meeting, that's when council gave the direction to bring this ordinance back for further consideration.
Okay, so, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So, actually, the history of this is, first, it was personal, and then I heard it from the community. One time prior to October, you know, there are concerns about package theft and people prowling around your front yard or your door. I was a victim of that. You know, I caught in my CCTV, a person just coming to my doorstep. And then, when he noticed that there's CCTVs, then he backed out. And, and I did share that at that time, social media, to then, to make sure that, you know, people are aware. And then, concerns and issues follow, right? I've heard from, from not just neighbors, but from several people that I meet. There are unknown Though there are unknown people knocking at their doorsteps. There is, you know, there is some even solicitors who does not wear any ID or, or anything that would show who they represent, like PG&E or, or other services. And then it came to my mind, you know, and as, as Chris said, you know, the, the property rights is already inherent with the owners or the, the possessors of that house. And originally, actually, what I thought is just to prohibit and make some sort of registration as to people or businesses who solicits the home. And as the idea developed, it has to be balanced with our constitutional right, right? Our, our freedom of speech or, or things that are more important. And good thing is, you know, there's been existing similar legislations. And with the analysis of the city attorney, with this ordinance tried to balance what is not supposedly prohibited under our constitution and laws, but also respecting property rights of the homeowners. So without this ordinance, a homeowner, as Chris clearly pointed out, can exclude whoever that homeowner wishes to, to come to, to his house or her house, right? But what this ordinance does now is it helps those people shy away or as you call it, afraid of calling these unwanted or uninvited people to their home. So all by, you know, posting signs. And, and further, the city would be able to help enforce these property wishes by these homeowners by enforcing their wishes. So there's, that's the outcome of the original thought that I had. Is having an ordinance, having everyone registered. But this ordinance came about and, and will have the same effect because it's giving it back to the homeowner or the occupier of that land to, to allow or disallow somebody going to their houses. So that's why I, I suggested this way back in October. And I believe, you know, if, if this passes, it, it makes an extra layer of protection to homeowners. If not, at least it's a layer of peace of mind. Make, having the feeling that the city is helping me as a homeowner or, or a possessor of, of that property to enforce my property rights as to who I want to, to invite, I mean, who I want to, who would be able to come and, and knock on my door.
So if we approve this ordinance, and if, I'll, I'll give an example if all of our residents don't have that sign on there, you will be able to knock on the door because there's no signs? Or is it a blanket throughout the city?
So the, there are components of the ordinance that will apply to any home regardless of whether or not they post a sign. So the ordinance has the ability for residents to tell someone to leave their property at any time and that they can withdraw their consent. So that applies regardless of whether or not someone posts a sign. If they do not post a sign, then what it wouldn't prevent is someone coming onto the property until they got that statement from the residence stating, "I don't want you here." So the difference is, is that with a sign, a property owner could express their desire for certain groups of people, for canvassers or solicitors or any trespasser, not to come onto their property and prevent that unwanted visitor from coming onto the property in the first place. But even if they choose not to post that sign, this law would also protect their right to choose at any time to tell someone to leave, even someone who they had previously invited onto the property.
Thank you. And we have a vice mayor.
I have at least two or three concerns. One is education. Because right now, most of the houses that I've seen have no solicitation, no soliciting, right? So now we need to explain to them exactly what the three categories are. No trespassing, no canvassing, and no solicitation. So my concern is it will take a while. And I, I, the enforcement, you know, how do we enforce this seamlessly? Because it will burden our police department, I think, somehow. So I think that was not answered. And the other concern I have is, for some reason, a segment, I'll give you an example. If a candidate cannot afford to do mailouts and the only, it's very expensive. And the only way they can connect to the residents is through knocking at the door. Are we limiting them access? Is that a legal issue? I don't know. So, so those are my three concerns. Education, enforcement, and access. And that's all I have for now, mayor.
Thank you very much, vice mayor. Any other comments? So I'd like to make a comment. I think having this ordinance at least gives people an option of having those three choices. So there's no solicitation, no trespassing, no canvassing. And I think that the educational part would just take time. People that will say they don't want canvassers, then they'll probably call up the police and the police will tell them, well, then you need to get a sign that says no canvassing. And then that's that. So for me, I'm, I'm okay with this ordinance. At least it gives people, at least it's on the books and it gives people an option. So, so I'd like to make a motion to, unless you have, vice mayor, you have another question?
Thank you, mayor. Before you make a motion, is there a way that we can make this a trial period instead of gives us time to educate the, our residents and also a trial to see if it works?
So it's always possible for the council to be able to add a sunset provision. It's also always possible for the council to take action if they don't believe the law is working, to go back and to repeal it or to change it, modify it, or to direct staff to come forward with proposals or suggestions for doing so. So those are two options that would be available to the council. In terms of.
There's, there's an echo, it's not very clear. Where is Daniel? Do you, do you see it? Do you hear it?
I'll, I'll try to project. Or is it worse if I do that? There, so the council could have a sunset provision to add to the current proposal. So to say this law will be effective for two years from the, from the time it becomes effective. Council can also at any time come forward if it's not working or needs to be modified, to change the law, repeal the law, do anything like that. Council can direct staff to, you know, come back and give information about what has happened in the interim. The other option that you have in terms of education is while ordinances normally take effect thirty days after adoption, that is thirty days after the second reading, you can have that period be longer if you want to have staff after adoption have a longer period to educate the community before it takes effect. In terms of the enforcement arm of that, the enforcement under, under this ordinance is primarily left to the resident, not the city. As this ordinance allows the resident to bring in action for unlawful trespass if they so believe that their, their rights have been infringed. It gives the city the ability to take action, for instance, on larger scale violations, persistent violators, things that are more than a person calling out a single residence or a single problem. So in that way, it's specifically designed with an added enforcement mechanism to take burden off of city staff and to put it with the resident and their choice of what they want to do.
Did that answer your question? No. Well, I'm going to make a motion to. Oh, you have, we have council member Lynn.
I know you're about to make the motion, but I'm going to make this request that if this ordinance passes tonight, the effective date should be January first of twenty twenty-five and not immediately. That's all.
And that is something which council, if they wanted to, could actually tonight put into the ordinance. So it's section five of the ordinance is what sets its effective date. If you want to change it from the standard thirty days language to effective January first, twenty twenty-five, you can do that.
So with the, let's have city attorney make some comments.
City manager.
City manager.
I just wanted to mention, if you're concerned about public outreach, we will be doing outreach between now and the end of the year on other items. And we can certainly add, this is one of those to introduce it and have a discussion with the community about that as we do outreach to the community.
Thank you, mayor. I will be, I, I will be more comfortable if, if we have a longer time for implementation. And I don't know how toward that, you know? Like council member Lynn, it could be one, one twenty-five. But, but that's like September, October, November, December, January. I think that would be good. Yeah.
So in which case, if a motion was brought with their proposed recommendation of move to waive reading beyond the title of the ordinance and introduce the ordinance with the amendment that it be effective January first, twenty twenty-five, as stated in section five of the ordinance, you could make a motion like that that carries that amendment. And then when this ordinance was brought back to you for a second reading, it would incorporate that amendment.
Okay, so move second. Okay, let's call for the vote. City manager, do you want to read that one more time or do people need the reading again?
No, so I believe we've sufficiently read the title. Boy, that echo is disconcerting. So I will clarify the motion. The motion is to presently introduce the ordinance as amended by council member Leeann and council member Chuah's suggestion to not have the ordinance go into effect until January first, twenty twenty-five.
Correct. Okay.
That's correct. Thank you.
Call for the vote.
Council member Barbara D.
Aye.
Vice mayor Chuah.
Aye.
Council member Leeann.
Nay.
Council member Fan.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
I, I am an aye.
Okay, motion passes. So we have a new ordinance on the books, well, actually, January twenty twenty-five. Okay, so now moving on to announcements and future agenda items.
Mayor, we have item C ten.
Oh, that's right, one consent item, item number ten, I believe. Thanks for reminding me. Okay, so council member Leeann.
Yes, so I, I pulled this item, although I think this is a great idea to name, to rename the Milpitas Library. But I don't want this process to be at this time during the, the election because if, if I feel like it is somewhat mudding the political process. So I would like to postpone this to the beginning of next year and not now.
Okay, so with the maker of the motion, I believe that was council member Fan. How would, or who was that? Who, who made that? Were you the one that made that motion? Let's, let's have, I want to hear from council member Fan.
Okay, yeah, I mean, this is something that isn't new. We actually, you know, requested this a while back, I think. It was just recently that it came to some of our attentions that, you know, there, there hasn't been much movement on it. So we, we chose to move it forward in the timeline. But in terms of, you know, timing the thing, this is something that we asked for, for a while ago. It went through a process. You know, our, our ad hoc subcommittee weighed in, you know, as requested by the council. So I, my opinion is to still move forward with it. If, if anything, though, delaying it, you know, is political more than anything. But that, that's, that's my opinion.
Thank you for the information. Council member, I mean, council member Barbara D., did you have any other comments to make?
Well, in the last council meeting, I agreed that this goes to the process. And the reason why I insisted it the last time is as I echo council member Fan, it's been a while and the process went its way. So the subcommittee did vet the additional name and, and recommended the name change and to call it other than a good faith and a deserving naming of the facility to somebody within the requirements and, and a description of that policy that we have in naming facilities and streets would, would mean otherwise. So from a one vote, I am going to go forward with this recommendation tonight for its approval. My question is, other than delaying it, I want it to be, if, if people are concerned about election, let's, let's do it prior to the election. So that's the question to staff. If this gets approved tonight, when will implementation be?
Thank you, Matt Kano, Assistant City Manager. So if this gets approved tonight, the name would be changed. The name would be changed in practice immediately. So it would take effective immediately. However, we do not currently, as noted in our agenda report, we do not currently have money and funds to put the, to actually put this new signage up on the outside of the library. And so during a future budget process, we'll have to look for the money to put the actual name on the outside of the library. However, we would in effect have the name changed immediately after tonight's council meeting if it is approved. So in practice, if there's a Milpitas specific event that we're published, that we are publicizing it in the library. that we're published, that we are publicizing it in the library, we would start using the new name essentially immediately.
At least prior to looking where to source the budget, would we at least move forward with some quotes and maybe you know, there is some, some sources other than waiting for the budget?
Correct. Yeah, do we do, we do have a range of quotes in the agenda report. We are getting a more specific quote at this time. We don't have that available, but we could make council aware of that. And yes, there are going to be other opportunities where we could move forward. We don't necessarily have to wait until the June, next June budget adoption. So there's opportunities where we could have the discussion earlier.
Right. So, so yes, I would ask if to look this early, available sources other than waiting on the next budget cycle.
Okay.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you, Matt Kano. So I'd like some, a briefing from our city, city manager first of the sequence of events.
Thank you, Mayor. It was just putting out in the background section of the agenda report that the, a request was made back in January, on twenty, January twenty third, twenty twenty four from councilmember Fan, requested that staff research the naming of the library, which we put into the prioritization process and reported out to the council in June. And at that time, we updated our tracker that we had reached out to the County of Santa Clara and we would prepare an informational report for the council. And then the topic came up again in August, on August fifth, twenty twenty four, from councilmember Barbara Dio. And then at that time, we brought it, staff said that we would bring it back to the council on August twentieth, which we did. And then the ad hoc naming subcommittee met the next day at the direction of the council on August twenty first and made recommendations that we're presenting to you tonight.
Thank you very much for that timeline. So people can get a clear picture of the sequence of events. So councilmember Barbara Dio, what was your recommendation? I didn't, I didn't, I didn't miss part of your, your.
Our, my recommendation is.
Hold on, for some reason you're not. Did you, I think, turn your, turn your mic on. Oh, you got it. Okay.
So actually, my recommendation is what the first option that the, that the agenda had for its approval. And additionally, if we look for for, you know, sources of funding instead of waiting on the next budget cycle. And to erase any impropriety of, of politicizing, if we can make this prior to the November election, that would be that would erase every doubt that other than the the good faithness and well-deserved renaming of the library is, is not political.
Is that a motion?
The, the, the second part is where to source the funds. Well, the, the last one is, so it makes the third, the last one is if we can make this prior to make this happen with changing the funding prior to the November election. Just to address concerns that this is about politicing. By the, the first option that we have. Second is to look for source of its funding. Third, to address concerns of politizing, right? Let's do it prior to election. There's no connection between the funding and the timeline within which I'm proposing that this be done.
City man, city attorney, can you?
Yeah, just to be abundantly clear, the only thing on the agenda for today is whether or not to adopt a resolution. As far as finding funding goes, if you'd like to bring that up during councilmember comments and suggestions, you're welcome to do that. But the only thing that's agendized for today is to either adopt or decide not to adopt a resolution to rename the library.
I have, I have a question.
Are you finished, Gary?
Yes, you know, it is just you're presenting something without ammunition to it, right? All I expected is, you know, staff is ready, whether or not this ordinance is, I mean, this, this project is approved. So it, it seems that you're, you're telling us that, okay, you approve it and we'll do the next step later on. We don't have plans if this goes forward other than wait for the next budget cycle.
Thank you, councilmember. At this time, we don't have a funding source identified for it. We are in the process of thoroughly evaluating all our, you know, funding, funding as we proceed head into the next budget process. But if we do receive direction from the city council tonight to go back and investigate potential funding sources and bring those back, that's something that we'll, we can do. We'll have to talk about the timing of that, but that's definitely something we can do sooner than next June's sooner than next, much sooner than next spring's budget process.
And deputy city manager, since you're there on the
that, so councilmember Gary, are you done? Because so that way I can give the floor to, to councilmember Leanne.
Motion, but that's my thought. So if it requires an announcement later on, we voted with the council or staff to look at it, I'll do that. It's something that we can do while the motion is is laid on the floor. I'll defer that to the city attorney. Thank you, Mayor.
Is that a motion you did make? You made a motion right now?
And rephrased by the city attorney to inform.
So I guess you made a motion. Is there a second? If not, it dies. We have a councilmember.
Waiting, Mayor. Okay, thank you. So can someone?
But there's a motion on the floor, so we have to take a vote on that first.
Do we have a second for the motion?
Okay.
I'll second it.
To clarify, the recommended motion is to approve adding Jose Estvez to the Milpitas historical naming list and to adopt a resolution to rename the Milpitas Library to Milpitas Jose Estvez Library. Is that the motion you intended to make? Councilmember Barbara Dio?
So with the two conditions set, I cannot include that in my motion. If I cannot, then that's the motion I make. And later on in the announcement will be those two conditions.
Sure. And councilmember Fan, as a second, is that the motion you intended to second?
Yes.
There's a motion on the floor.
Okay, let's, let's now take a vote. We have a, we have a comment from councilmember Leanne. Hold on, Mayor.
Okay, so my question is, who is on this subcommittee? The mayor and the vice mayor?
Question is what?
Who serves on this subcommittee?
Yes, the, the ad hoc renaming committee is the mayor and the vice mayor at this time.
Just the two.
As appointed by the council.
So this is the only library in our city. Should it, you know, should we do outreach to the community members? Because I, I think they do care what's the name of the library as well.
Who are you asking a question to?
I don't know. Whoever has to answer for me.
To the staff or to me?
I guess staff.
Staff? Matt?
Yes, I guess it's, it's really up to the council how you would like to proceed with the, through the process now. We went through the formal process of taking the name so that former mayor Estvez could be added to the naming list or the list of names, and that's what we brought before you tonight.
Okay, you have a question? Okay. So there was a motion, so now there was a second and we'll take a vote. Councilmember Barbara Dio.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Nay.
Councilmember Fan.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
Aye.
Okay, and you know, it has passed by thirty three, forty three, forty one. Okay. All right, so now we'll move on to our announcements and future agenda items. City manager, do you have any announcements?
I have one quick announcement, Mayor. With the warm weather returning, we will have our community recreation facilities open as cooling centers both tomorrow, Wednesday, September fourth and Thursday, September fifth. They are open during regular hours, which I believe I have. Yeah, so for both days, essentially seven AM through nine PM. And that's both the community center and the senior center and our Milpitas Recreation Center for anyone who needs to come and cool off in the hot weather. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And councilmembers, do you have any announcements? Do we have a vice mayor Chua?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to bring back to the priorities, prioritization list the, the animal cruelty ordinance to update to include other animals, horses and other animals like cats. That's, that's all I have.
Okay, thank, thank you. Anyone else?
We need to go for consensus, Mayor.
Oh, we have a consensus, sorry.
Councilmember Barbara Dio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Councilmember Fan.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I am an aye.
Any other? I have, I have, I don't see any other consent. I do have a couple of them. I would like to staff to look into creating a compassion fund for our community members that have go, are going through cancer or some other devastating event in their life. I think that just having a, a small fund and anyone can contribute to, to it. Could be from the public, it could be from staff, it could be the council members. So I'd like staff to look into that.
For consensus, Mayor, this is going to be councilmember Barbara Dio.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Councilmember Fan.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I'm an aye. The other one is reduce the rental assistance grant. Right now folks through the Milpitas Assistant Program can get up to five thousand dollars. Those dollars are running out. And from my understanding, the amount that they are getting is twenty five hundred. So there are monies that are left over, but I would like to reduce that to twenty five hundred or even three thousand because we need to stretch those dollars to help other people. And so I would like staff to look into reducing the rental assistance grant from from the amount that is, it's five thousand right now, right? Correct?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, at present, the total, the one-time annual amount is five thousand. I did ask and received information prior to the meeting that the average assistance is currently about three thousand eight hundred seventy seven per unduplicated participant. So it's for each first-time applicant, they are receiving on average thirty, a little over thirty eight hundred dollars per person.
Yeah, so I would like it to be reduced to at least thirty five hundred. So that way it opens it up for other people. We can have more to help those in need. It, it adds up. I mean, you're talking from five thousand? Yes, it is. I know, but I would like it reduced to five. It's right now, they can get up to five thousand.
So, so if I may, the, the item is for prioritization. We can certainly bring it back. Our, we're bringing the prioritization at your next council meeting on September the seventeenth. And, and so this would put it on to the list for further discussion rather than tonight.
Maybe you can clarify something. Okay, so, so right now, they, a person can get five thousand, but the average is thirty five or thirty eight. So what happens to that other money that's left over that? Is it just sitting there or is it, do they wait till they need it again?
Yeah, it, it stays in the pot and each year it renews. So they can apply again the following year. And the, the money that's left over goes, is that correct? I believe that's correct from the housing.
See, it goes back, so that same person can apply, reapply, but it doesn't, it, you know, I mean, to open it up to other people that that might have a need. That's my whole point.
Assistant city manager, Matt Kano, yeah, we don't, the delta between the maximum per applicant, which is five thousand and the average that people get thirty eight hundred, that, that, that delta, that twelve hundred dollars, we don't, we don't hold that aside or keep that. We're just giving money out as we, as we can. And so we're not we're not, we're not holding that money anywhere. We're
So, so you're telling me that one person can apply one year, then the next year they can apply again for that five thousand?
Correct.
Correct, yeah, that's ten thousand. But you need to open it up for other people because there's a lot of people out there that lost their jobs. And I'm just, I just, we just need to, I, for me, I would like to see it reduced from five thousand to, what was it, thirty five hundred? Or even thirty eight hundred. So anyway, though, I'm just putting that out there and, and it all depends what the council wants. Okay, so let me have a vice mayor, she's ask her.
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe before we do that, we should ask for a statistics on how many people are really getting five thousand? And if those people are getting thirty eight hundred, are, are they always applying every, every year? Or what's the history? Do we have people that has been applying for many years? And how many new people are applying?
Yeah.
I think we need to get statistics before we make a decision to reduce or increase the amount. That's my suggestion.
Well, maybe that could be part of the
We can provide those statistics.
You know, yeah, I think, I think, I think, yeah, having those details would help us make a decision.
Okay.
So if we can, if you can do that, please.
Yeah.
And maybe take it to the housing subcommittee and then to the, or to the council, whichever, whichever one is first. Okay, we'll, we'll do that. Yeah, let's do, do we need a consensus for that?
So we need consensus to put that on the, the less for prioritization.
Councilmember Barbara Dio.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Councilmember Fan.
Nay, I do not support reducing the tenant assistance. If anything, we should be adding to it. We don't need to reduce it.
But then it reduces.
And, and, and Mayor Montano.
It's just, yes. Okay. The, the, my last one is, oh, actually, I tap another one. So we know the food pantry, their hours of operation are very limited and I've had so many people asking for, they need food, but their, their, their operate, their site is closed. And then even on the signage says the days that they're open, they're not even open. So I would like staff to look into increasing the days of operation to help our most vulnerable in our community. To five days a week instead of two days a week. Let's have a, if you have any feedback, let me know. Just have vice mayor.
City manager, do we have authority to, to request something like that to the food pantry? I thought that's a nonprofit and not affiliated with the city.
Yeah, I I don't know the answer to that question, but that would be part of the analysis that we could bring back to the council if you, if you choose to prioritize, put this on the prioritization list. Otherwise, we can look into it just as an information item, but we'll take just a, less than four hours to find out the information and we could bring that back too.
I think just do that.
Well, it it, it'll be part of that. Um, the reason being is um, like I said, they, they're, hours of operation are, okay, I'll give you some history. They were, the city was charging them seventeen hundred dollars a month uh, back in two thousand twelve.
Mayor, yes.
That's right, never mind. Okay, so I just want to make, we'll just go ahead and uh, put the, if, if we could put that on the agenda and, and then the wish.
Can I, can I add?
This calendar.
If I can add.
And then that way, uh, we can look into, have the city look into that.
Mayor, if I can add real quick, we are currently looking in and we're having discussions with the food pantry about their operations and um, and getting some analysis behind that is a work effort currently undergoing in the city manager's office.
Okay.
And so we will be able to provide a report um, on that and have a timeline right now, but in the near future.
If you're already doing that, that's great because that does need to be looked at. And my last one is, uh, if we do, I know we used to have some type of a hotline and there's been an increase in graffiti all over the city. If we have a graffiti hotline, if you can look into that. So I need a consensus for that.
We, uh, through the My Milpitas app, we, graffiti is one of the topics that, yeah, that anyone can.
Okay, that's it then. Okay, if anyone else have any other comments? We have councilmember Barbara Dio.
Thank you, Mayor. So since we approve uh, the renaming of the library, would like to request the staff to look for uh, sources of uh, funds uh, that would not only make it effective as approved, but also have a physical manifestation of science. And of course, a, a definite quotation of it, so we know how much to spend.
There are consensus?
Okay, for consensus, councilmember Barbara Dio.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Leon.
Nay.
Councilmember Fan.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
Aye. Okay, all right, uh, I don't see anymore, so meeting is adjourned.